This conference will now be recorded.
It is now 9:00 a.m. We'll stand and say the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic. And one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are attending the special board meeting of Mitchell County Supervisors. Today's October 10th. It is available on GoToMeetings. The first item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Jim moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark seconded it. The first item of business is discussion with Solutions.
All approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, all approval, same sign, or all approval?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Discussion with Solutions regarding managed IT services is the first item of business. And we have Jenny Falgout and Mike Barr from Solutions online with us to discuss that program. And I'll let you folks maybe better introduce yourselves and we'll get started.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your consideration in this and allowing us to come to your board meeting. We appreciate your time. I did send over a quick slideshow. If we want to pull that up, and it kind of goes over who we are.
So are they?
No, they're going. You're gonna share it on your screen then? Is that what you're gonna be doing?
Um, I had asked, I had sent it over to Cindy and Rachel.
We need to share it. If we can share it, we can do that.
That's.
That might be the issue.
Yeah, we're having just a technical difficulty here this morning, so.
Sure, no problem. I understand that completely. I don't have the ability to share on my side. It says to ask the organizer to make me a presenter. So sorry.
We found we had an HDMI cable that was bad this morning, so that's kind of threw us for a problem.
Gosh. I have about 100 in a box next to me. How shit do you want to do this? How do I share? Maybe this? Make presenter?
I think that'll, yeah, that should work.
Yeah, alright. Let's find it. Give me just a moment. Alright. Let's see. Where are you? Technology. Hmm, let's see. Alright, share. Not use this. There we go. Share.
Very good.
Everybody seen it, see it then?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
You went muted for some reason.
Okay, here we go. My name is Jenny Falgu. I am Business Development for Solutions and here as a whole. Also on the line is Mike Barr. He's the manager of the Managed Services and Technical and Professional Services at Solutions. We also have a great team behind us. We're missing a picture here. It was on my side earlier. But this is the team you have backing you, plus a couple extras in the background. A list of some of our certifications. So when you hire Solutions, you don't just hire the one person to take that position. You hire a team of people. Mike, you want to take this?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, what we're talking about here today is our Managed Services, which you guys already have, the Silver Level Managed Services. And that's great, and we definitely appreciate the relationship we have with you there. So we're not trying to, not necessarily trying to like upsell here or something. We wanted to give you guys, you know, the opportunity that, you know, based on the history of things and where things are at right now, that we can take the Managed Services level up a notch and do fully managed services. So right now you have, you know, what we would call a co-managed services, or it's been labeled Managed Services Silver. And so we do things like proactively monitoring for alerts, things like hard drives failing, excuse me, you know, hard drives filling up, errant logins, password changes, other various alerts that come out of the servers, the PCs, the firewalls, the switches, pretty much anything that's on the network. You know, we actively kind of monitor it. Whatever they're able to tell us is wrong, you know, that's what we kind of watch for. And so we look for those things. Part of that is that we're tracking all the assets that are online that we're aware of. And so we have an asset inventory. We, as part of that, we also have the antivirus and antivirus stuff in there, or as the terms nowadays are EDR, Electronic Detection and Response, is also a part of that. And we, and one of the biggest parts is we try and do patch management. So it's kind of a best effort thing of, because patching is a rough, rough business, making sure that Windows updates are getting applied. But that's a big focus of kind of the co-managed services and taking that out of the hand. So as part of that though, you know, the way that you're currently set up, you have prepaid labor with us. And so when we do get a call, whether from an onsite IT person or somebody in a office, we work on it and we have an hourly rate that we, you know, charge against that. We call that kind of break-fix is an industry term. And that's how it runs. So you call in, get help, and we go against that prepaid labor hours that you pay for. And by doing prepaid labor, that's a convenience that we gave that you could make a payment to us that's clear, like what it's for, and then we can just chew out of it. And it makes it easier to kind of budget for and so on and so forth. But it also, one of the benefits that comes with that is you get a 15% discount on the hours. So that's where you're at currently. And I just would be remiss to leave out that it also includes on-call. So you do have access 24/7 to an on-call number. And it's not something, you know, currently what that means is you call in on a weekend or after hours, and there are, you know, overtime charges on those, you know, as we talked about, the hourly rates to fix the things. On-call also incurs overtime hours and such. So if you want to go to the next slide. And so what we're talking about now is you have the possibility that, since there is no IT person at the moment, what we can do is take this up to a fully managed services, or managed services gold is a term that we use. And so it's a step up from where it's at. And so that would be full coverage. And, you know, really the biggest thing, what you see here is a lot of this is the same from the co-managed, except the biggest differences are there aren't charges for like the little stuff that you call in throughout the day, throughout the week, for us to fix. So you no longer have those hourly charges on the calls that come in. Now, the difference there, or the one caveat to that is that when you have something new, so if you've got a larger project, like we're gonna put in a new server, right? You know, that's a big deal, but not everybody does that very often. You know, it's once every five to seven years, whatever. So there'd be, there would be some like labor charges that come with that, but it'd be included as part of that project, you know. And so bottom line is you're not really paying, it's, all the labor is included with the contract now. And so, you know, as we look through this, it's all the same thing, except now you no longer have those payments. And then the other thing is that we can do monthly onsite visits with, at no additional charge. So once a month we'd come onsite. Generally what happens is we build a list up of things that would rather be done onsite and, you know, can wait, or we time it out for this, if there's gonna be a project going on, you know, a new HVAC system going in, things like that, whatever. And we'll time it out and be onsite for those. So once a month, there's a site leave visit included in that. We're only two and a half hours away. We saw like Tom came onsite here recently, and that was a planned trip. I was actually planning to be with him. It was more of a, it was meant to be a customer relationship and satisfaction meeting. And I was gonna come onsite and say hi to everybody and see, you know, what all the needs were. But I ended up getting a cat bite in my finger and having to have surgery on my finger. So Tom went by himself, and, but we're just stone's throw down the road from you guys, and we can be there in any instance. So, I mean, there's really not much to it. And as probably anybody here knows, Rachel knows, I'm not a salesperson. So I'm not here to try and sell you. I'm trying to provide the county with a, an alternative to the situation that you're in now. And we would love to, you know, not only continue our relationship, grow our relationship with you, and serve you as, you know, fellow island serving islands. And so that's kind of what I have on that. I don't know what's on the next slide there, Jenny.
I don't think there's anything wrong with salespeople.
No, no, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a salesperson, but so I don't have all the fancy. I'm a tech. I was, you know, Jenny went into it on the Technical Services Manager, but I've spent most of my career, you know, as a systems administrator or a systems engineer. And I've been here with Solutions for 15, or going on 15 years. And so been around for a while, and I know the way that the counties operate. And Tom's been here for just a couple of years less than me, and so he's my senior systems engineer right now. And then we've got Eric and Mike Torriari, so Mike T. and Mike B. But yeah, I mean, that's who we are as far as that goes. And I think Jenny has a different opportunity coming up on the next slide. I don't know if you, if we want to start questions or, yeah.
Yeah, do you have any questions right now before we move forward?
Yeah, I have some questions. So what we currently have is we get charged, we have prepaid labor, we get charged an hourly rate with overtime on weekends and at night. And you said that as far as the fully managed, correct me if I'm wrong, but fully managed services, there isn't an hourly rate to the normal day-to-day operations?
Yep, that's correct.
But then on the right side of that slide at the top, it says also includes prepaid labor hours at a discounted hourly rate, so.
Well, so what that can mean is, as I touched on briefly, was that things that are new, if you have new projects that you're going on, you know, you're adding something in, maybe. I know you guys already have cameras, right? But if you didn't have cameras and you're adding new camera system, right? There's gonna be some labor charges that go with a new system coming in or that kind of thing. But generally that labor charge, we're gonna try and outline that with the project and what have you. So it's only new stuff. Anything that's there and existing and covered under the contract, you know, that's under the Managed Services, then it's, there's no charge on it. Does that answer your question?
Answers that, yeah. So you did go through that, but I wasn't, I wasn't aware that that's what that was. So yes, you answered that.
So yeah, so for the things that would need a charge, you still have the prepaid labor available to you and that discount that goes along with it.
Okay.
So that's why it's still included on the slide.
Okay, my biggest concern is the help desk type situation, and we can use this morning as a great example. We're trying to get our HDMI to go here. Cable's probably bad or whatever, or any other situation where somebody can't access the network with their computer, or the printer is not on the network, or the computer is not accessing the printer through the network, just simple things like that. How are you going to, how are you going to manage the help desk type situations?
Sure. So that's, I mean, that's a good, a good point of view or a good question that I didn't touch on. So one of the things that we rely on, obviously in the end, what this amounts to is there's a cost savings. And so there is a, there is a difference to having somebody like sitting at a desk at your beck and call every moment, right? So with the cost savings, you don't necessarily have that, but the way that we handle it, and we've done it for years. We have a lot of customers that don't have an IT person at all. That's one of the ways that we operate. And so we've been doing it a long time. And we tend to utilize somebody like a, what we, the term we use is an IT liaison. And so we have somebody that's not scared of looking at a cable or something, and we can talk them through just about anything. Now, you know, one of the things you might run into right now is you're sure you realize that HDMI cables is a problem. Do you have a replacement cable or whatever? And so we can, we can help talk through how to troubleshoot those with somebody on the phone, or if it's something that can wait, like I talked about, when we come onsite, we can do that. And in the case of emergencies, we can come on sites at other times as well. I mean, that's why I said, or I pointed out the fact that we're only two and a half hours down the road, and a little less than that actually, but roughly that. So that's how we would handle that. We would have somebody in different counties handle it different. Some people have one person, it's kind of always the IT liaison. Other counties have, you know, kind of somebody in each department that, you know, we can talk through on the phone and say, okay, you know, what do you see right here? All right, take that blue cable, unplug it, count to 10, plug it back in. Or, you know, that kind of thing. And we can, we can talk them through those, and we're very used to doing that. We've been providing remote support for a long time, and especially since COVID. We went all remote for a couple of years right there around COVID, and because of the way our company was. And we continued to support our customers. Now we do go back on the road and go onsite when we needed, need to do so. But yeah, does that answer your question?
Yep, that answers that part of it. So you're two and a half hours away, or is there mileage as far as being charged in order to get here?
If there is anything outside of the monthly site visits, there would be, there would be a mileage charge. Now, we are lenient with that kind of thing, like, you know, as we saw, Tom came onsite last week, and we didn't charge for that. We try and go out of our way to find ways to do, to do things with, you know, we're not trying to nickel and dime. But it's more so that, you know, that we do have to cover our costs at times though, you know. So we can't make trips, you know, every day and not have some sort of compensation for it or whatever. But the new contract or the gold contract would include one month, or one site visit a month at no additional charge. And you can even, if there's nothing big going on, to do the monthly site visit, one month you can save it and make, because maybe the next month, you know, like I said, HVAC system's coming in, and you want us there a couple of days to be a part of a new HVAC system that's coming in, right? So.
Gold, so gold is fully managed then?
Yes, correct.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
So I, you do have those expedited response times too, above and beyond, like above that Silver level, they're flagged to where anybody that has, you know, an issue, their ticket is flagged where it's a higher response.
Is that mine? Hold on. Let me hold my way down. Yes. So. Let me try that. Is that better? No? It's not. There we go. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. So I apologize for that. I have a couple of questions about your proactive solutions. So that would entail what? Let's say right now we're in the midst of halfway through a new phone system. How would that service look moving forward?
Um, well, halfway through a new phone system, we would, we would help with that. That wouldn't be necessarily like part of proactive. I can break that down into twos. So a new phone system would be like a new thing. We would want, if we were gonna take that on as a deal, we would want to meet with the phone company, figure out, or the vendor, and, you know, figure out where the project's at, and find the best way to move forward. But that's a new system, so there would be a separate charge for that. That doesn't mean that, you know, everything that's totally involved, some of it would, you know, once it becomes part of the system then, or part of the Managed Services, then it's, you know, it's included from there. And so, but if you want to talk about what proactive means, so what that means is the difference is in the co-managed, what we're gonna do is, like I said, monitor for alerts on, you know, failing hard drives, that kind of thing. And then we're gonna call, if we get something, you know, let's say Rachel's hard drive is 99% full and she's gonna run into problems. We're gonna call and, as a co-manage, we're gonna call the IT person and say, hey, here's this alert. Do you want to go check out Rachel's issue or work with her? Do you want us to do it? That's how we manage that. And, but with the fully managed, we're gonna proactively call and not, not, you know, pass it on to somebody else or whatever. There's no waiting for us to do it. We're gonna proactively attack the issue. If we see alerts in the network, we're gonna say, oh, you know, there's jumbo packets flooding the switch. So we're gonna, you know, turn off jumbo packets on these ports and figure out what's going on. That kind of thing. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yep, somewhat. So I want to take that half a step farther, and let's further define your IT liaison. From what I'm understanding, you say that you have someone here in each department, or a few departments, or some boots on the ground from our group to serve as an IT liaison for your entity to help do regular problem solving until you folks are onsite? Is that?
Yeah, that's correct. Or to be a set of hands when we need a set of hands. If we need somebody to go and check where a cable is plugged into the switch, because we can't figure that information out remotely, then we ask them to go and look and tell us where this cable is going. Or if somebody is having, you know, if there's an internet issue, and, you know, one of the common fixes for internet tying up is generally coming from the ISP, and the best way to help it is to reboot the modem or depending on, you know, in the firewall. And so we talk them through going and unplugging like the modem, even though it's part of the network, isn't, isn't something that you can control remotely, only the ISP can touch those. And so we'd say, okay, go and pull the, pull the power cord, you know, talk us through, okay, here's the device. Yes, you're using the right device, you know, after talking through it. Go ahead and find that power cord right there, pull it out, plug it in for, or, you know, leave it out for 10 seconds, plug it back in. And, you know, let's clear up this problem. So those are the kind of things that we would do. Or if somebody's saying their monitor is flickering, you know, we might ask, okay, of the IT liaison, like, look in the drawer or basket full of extra cables. Is there another HDMI or display port or VGA cable, whatever the case may be in there? Let's get that, and can you, you know, just unplug it from that monitor and plug the new one in? And let's see if that solves the problem. And so if that solves a problem, that's great. If it doesn't, then we need to start looking at that monitor is probably going bad, and we need to replace it. So those are the kind of things that we would.
Yeah, I think it's real simple things, things that need an actual tactile, you know, press this button, unplug this. You know, we wouldn't ask anybody to do anything crazy. Just simple tasks that you actually need hands to do that maybe we aren't there to do for that.
So really, in your view, an IT liaison really isn't much different than a normal computer user within our system here that you are walking through a help desk call?
That's, that's correct. We usually, it's somebody that's not, let's say, IT adverse. They're not scared. You know, there's some people that almost go into a panic if you ask them to look at, okay, there's a blue cable coming out of the wall. Can you follow it and see, you know, where it goes? The, oh, I'm not doing that. I'm not touching anything. You know, they get really adverse. And then there's other people that aren't quite like that. And so usually the IT liaison, they don't have to have any special skills. They just need to be not IT adverse, if you will.
Okay, so let me ask this question. Let's say that there's an issue either with a 911 service or some of the systems over at the sheriff's office in the middle of the night. How do you handle that?
Well, they can, they can call in, and we can definitely go through, you know. So generally, what we was established, you know, that when it comes into a 911 system, there's a whole lot involved. And we deal with a lot of 911 call centers. But generally, the actual 911 phone call system, you know, for instance, is, it's handled by a vendor. The, you know, whether it be Raycom or CenturyLink or whoever's, you know, dealing with that system. And that's gonna be their primary point of contact for that. And we can help, we can, we can help identify that. We can help, you know, get into switches and tell them, you know, what's going on on the switch, or, you know, those kind of things, you know, whatever kind of troubleshooting they want to do. But you do, their system is under contract, and they would definitely come onsite. But that being said, if there's some sort of emergency, you know, that's what we'll do. We'll come onsite event, you know, once we try and do some due diligence. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna interfere with a we're not gonna interfere with a vendor's system. So we're not gonna take that nine one one Viper system that Century Link sold you and start messing with the cables and and doing this and that. And no IT person should. That's that's on them. It's it's on the the dispatchers to call in and say, hey, our phones aren't working, you know, or whatever. Can you, we need to get somebody to fix this. And so those critical systems do have their own backup. So when it comes, you know, to for us to support, you know, generally what we're talking about is really, you know, we'll, we'll play, we'll play middleman and liaison for a system like that, but it's gonna really fall on that vendor. And we're there to be the primary on things like their their PC that they're running their CAD software on and their mock and and those things. We we can help with that. Most of those things we can do remote. You know, I can think of the last big thing that we had for nine one one call centers was back, oh, it's gotta be about a year and a half or so ago, maybe two. We had there. So there's this CrowdStrike application that the state gives out for free. It's a cybersecurity application and CrowdStrike as a company had had a big issue where they pitched, pushed out a bad update and it took everybody's computers down that were running CrowdStrike across the United States. And that included a lot of like nine one one call centers and stuff. So that was a long few days for us. But we got a call, we got up and we started troubleshooting, working in the issue and really actually, you know, I'm not trying to like brag or something, but I I was on call that night and when it happened, I was like, this is, this is something being caused. You know, like, there's, there's something deeper here that we can't fix. It's going across the board on all our customers. What what is in in not just nine one one call centers or something and it's going, we can, I can see the effects going on at courthouses and things. And I identified, I'm like, look, this seems like a CrowdStrike. That's the only thing that's shared across all of these resources. So I called into the state, you know, at like two AM in the morning or whatever. And I was like, are there any? We have any known issues going on with CrowdStrike or anything? And they said, no, nope, nothing going on. And I said, I I can't believe that. Can you like double check on things or whatever? And and sure enough, like fifteen minutes later, I got a call back and they're like, yes, CrowdStrike has a major outage going. So we were up and we were working and that took applying, there was a little manual fix that had to happen and 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 up, a new update being applied. And we worked for days until we got all of the customers back up and running from that. And but the first priority was was nine one one call centers. And that's, that's how it was first identified at one in the morning. You know, that particular morning. And so you know, that's, that's an instance. Sometimes we get calls for people saying like, hey, my, you know, one AM from nine one one center, hey, my Netflix isn't working. And so that's something that's like up to you guys. Is that something that's legit or can it wait till, you know, the next morning? Is that an emergency? It it probably isn't, you know. But if you guys want to treat it as emergency, then we'll treat it as emergency and we'll help them. That's, but I guess, I guess I could go on for longer, but I don't know if I've addressed your question or not. I don't want to keep going.
Yep. So when you talk about asset inventory and asset management, how does the gold status of solutions fit in with counties managing their IT budgets or IT budgets being presented to the county board? How does that work?
Generally, that's still left to somebody. I would say in most cases, the the auditor ends up presenting that, but we work with them. I I work with a ton of auditors on the budgeting and making sure that they're right. But we're, you know, we're not employees. That's an obvious thing. So the asset inventory that we maintain is is a best effort on on some hardware, but it's, it's a real good. I generally say it's, it's a, we have a good asset list of things that were either purchased through us or that are online. So, you know, computers, servers, switches, those things are online and we can track those, right? But what we can't track is, you know, does Hannah in the recorder's office have the the twenty seven inch HP monitor with, you know, this serial number, whatever. We don't, we don't know exactly what one, because a monitor isn't online, right? It it may be plugged into a computer, but it's not, it's not online. Computers don't identify generally that in depth. So we're, we're not sure exactly something like that. Or, you know, maybe things that are sitting on a shelf as as spares or backups or future, you know, that are inventory. We may not be aware of those, but we can, we can, like, if if we did this, we would come on site and and try and look at something like that. Know, okay, you've got a stockpile of of four monitors and a couple PCs and, you know, and then some backup switches in case one of the switches goes bad.
You have to record it then, so that you know what we have in the building.
Yes, yeah.
For insurance purposes. So our practice now is that when our IT person purchases some equipment, they are to report, record it and the date for sustainability and for cycling through monitors, CPUs, whatever, laptops, whatever the case may be. And that then they can reference that, but also they turn that list into our auditor for adding those items onto our insurance policies. And those items that we're taking out of usage, thus the same, they need to come both off our insurance. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And so what I'll say to that is, that's a good point that you have. You you have a procedure and we can help and work within that procedure. We don't, we don't know, you know, every county does stuff like that different. And and they want to I don't know, they they wanted, they want to do it their own way. And so we, we will facilitate and work within your means as is necessary. Do we do the full on budgeting process and and presentation to the board? Generally, no. But we can have discussions of what that could look like for you guys. Generally, I would think you would want an actual employee to do that so we can work very closely with somebody like Rachel or or somebody else in the auditor's office or or whatever office. We've actually seen it happen in the treasurers or their assessors or recorders. I mean, we, we have all sorts of people that help with those kind of thing or that we help with those kind of things. So whoever the case may be, we can definitely work with them. But yeah, I generally spend a lot of time on the phone around budgeting time with auditors and the like, going through budget numbers and such.
I just have a couple more questions and I'll pass the questioning on to Mark or Rachel. So your gold status right now, the the annual cost is for a gold contract is what?
Well, so that's gonna be different. Yeah, we do have a slide on that.
I'll just hold on that. But then my last question is, so let's say right now, we needed you to look up a receipt for something that came into our system. Because I I understand that you're backing us up right now and we appreciate that. So let's say we needed you to look up an invoice or a receipt or some phones that were purchased, let's say. Is that something that you folks have the ability to do to look out into our former IT individuals? Invoices and receipts there online or no?
We don't generally do that for, even for our current gold customers. We, like I said, we can work within means, we can help somebody. If you're talking about going through, like, say, their email account, we can, we can definitely help and do that. If you're talking about going through vision and finding you know, the recorded claims and and such, we don't generally do that. No, somebody somebody else does that.
Okay, okay. Rachel or Mark?
Waiting for the praise. I've got another follow up question if you have time. Sorry. Has to do with the IBM. So I believe we're on the Browns plan, I think, because that's related to the IBM. And so the fully managed goal plan, is that cover anything that you're doing to work on the IBM or is that separate?
It, that is something that's separate. It's, it's always historically kind of been two separate pieces of the house. Definitely. That's a very good question. I should add that to my notes to make sure to talk about.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions before we move on?
So quick question on the IBM, the server situation. How close are we to getting that installed, ready, up and running?
Well, so you're in the, you're in the queue. I don't have the exact, so that's a different department that actually does it. I mean, we, my team facilitates that and that's actually what Tom came on site and racked. And and so that was a point I was gonna make to the maintenance gentleman is his name Randy. Is that correct? Dave, Dave, yes. So Dave, Dave helped Tom lift that very heavy server and stuff. And Dave's been helpful in some of those IT liaisons stuff that we have done. We've had several instances right out the gate, you know, that that new phone system caused issues because there was like very small piece that was put in and and it wasn't working. And so Dave helped us identify some cables, you know, plug some things in into some different ports and and away we went. He did a very, that, that's what we needed and he did a stellar job with that. He did exactly, you know, he he wasn't adverse to it. Everything went well. But that's, so the server is unboxed and unwracked and ready for the IBM team to take over and do the install. But we have, we have a lot of them. And so I think, I don't know where exactly you are in that list. I can find that information and get it back to you.
That would be great. That would be very helpful. I think we've been waiting for that quite some time, so. And I understand there's a lot of them. I appreciate that very much.
Yes, but we wanted to make sure you were prepped so that we weren't, when it came to your time, there wasn't any further delay by us coming on site and getting it put in the rack. And that's something that, you know, prior, the IT person would have done. We could have, once again, talked them through, like, okay, yeah, you know, unboxing and get it in the rack and then, you know, we'll tell you where to plug the cables in and and go and go from there. But since we didn't have that leisure anymore, we wanted to make a, you know, a complimentary trip. So and under the guise of customer satisfaction, we went on site and got that installed. And that's kind of the thing that we do. And so and we, we went to some other counties and did, you know, similar bits along the way. That was a long day, but I don't have an exact date. And so was that, that was Pam that asked for that, right?
Yes, yes, it is. Thank you.
I am.
You know, Ryan had been following up back and forth, back and forth for more than a few months on that situation.
We wanted to make sure everything was ready so that when it was your time in line, that it was all ready to go. So. So, yeah. Uh, I think, so is that, I think that answers everything. Is that correct? Are we ready to move?
Good for now, you bet.
Yep. Okay, great. We just have a couple more slides. This is a new offering. Kind of Mike's, Mike's baby at the moment, the cybersecurity and phishing training. Mike, if you want to discuss that a little bit more in depth.
Sure. So I think what we're, the the point of putting this out there as well is this is a new offering. And we wanted to make you aware of it. So this is something that Rachel should should understand a bit. So right now, the the state gives cybersecurity training to you guys for free once a year through a product called Proofpoint. And once a year, you got to go through and enroll all your people and and I'm sure, Rachel, you know what I'm talking about, right? And and they go through and do their training because her, her department's required absolutely to do this once a year training. So the problem that we had is that that offering of once a year, we tried to get them to allow it for more than once a year and they weren't. So as one of my focuses has been in throughout my career has been cybersecurity. I'm the one from the the list of of certifications and things. I'm the one that was CH certified ethical hacker and countermeasures and so on and so forth. And that's always been my focus. And so I've definitely been heavily involved. So there, there's like a big four we talk about or whatever, when it comes to best bang for your buck for cybersecurity. And that's taking away local admin rights, doing Windows updates, two factor authentication and cybersecurity training. And really, once a year, according to the the studies in my own perspectives, you know, in-house, now our corporate office runs it, but it used to be, you know, back before we acquired, we ran our cybersecurity training in in-house. And we found that it, doing it once a year wasn't enough because people, once they go through cybersecurity training, they'd be real good about not clicking on bad links and, you know, downloading bad stuff or giving away their passwords through phishing emails that once, when you do that training, you're good for three to four months and then you'd start to slack off and get a little, little lazy with it and kind of forget. Then you do the training again and everybody's really good and not doing any of that stuff. So the the industry standard has really moved to doing like quarterly. And we're not talking about like going and doing an hour long course or something for every, every quarter or whatever you do. You know, generally, what it looks like is a, is like a half hour training once a year and then some little ten to fifteen minute kind of trainings throughout the year. And and along with that, some phishing campaigns that have remediation capabilities. So if somebody actually does fall for the bad link, then they automatically get enrolled to take the course again or whatever. And so this is a new offering to to augment what the the state has done, just because we, we don't feel like it's it's adequate and and we we got the same feeling from our customers. So this was brought out of need and not so much like we're just inventing something to do. This is one of the best things you can do for keeping your network secure is is training the end users because no matter what security you put in place, if users are clicking on things they shouldn't be, think bad things are gonna happen, no. And and depending on what statistics you read, between eighty and ninety percent of all data breaches and network breaches happen, they start through email. And so this really takes a stab at trying to address that. So we wanted to put that out there. And I think the next slide then is pricing, right, Jenny? And and that more us putting that out there is kind of due diligence because now, you know, that would have been something we would have talked to Ryan about in the past or whoever the IT person was. But since there's nobody here and we had your ear, we wanted to put that out in front of people. So if you want more information, you want to get on board or whatever, we can definitely do that. But
Obviously, some of my links broke, but yes, our customers love us. Y'all are one of them. But we have lots more customers across the state, too.
Mike, I'd like to ask you two questions before we talk dollars, okay?
Sure.
Go ahead and take a drink of water.
I've been doing a lot of talking, so.
Yes, go ahead.
My voice was getting a little. My voice was getting a little.
Has to do with after hour call response time. So if, let's just pick on the comm center. They call you, they call at one o'clock in the morning. Does a person pick, do you people pick that phone up right away? Or is there like a half an hour wait time before they get a call back from you? Or how does that work?
No, that's, that's a good question. And there, we do ask for a little kind of leeway at that. We, we are the ones that answer the phones and we have a system set up. So we'll just say, in this instance, I'm on call, right? And so the call will ring to me and then it will roll over and ring to Tom if I don't pick up. And then it'll roll over and ring to Eric and we just kind of bounce through like who, whoever the primary is for that week. And then, then we have, you know, redundancy. So, you know, usually the, kind of the instructions we send out say, call, but let the phone ring for a little while. Because in order to have that redundancy, we run it through a, you know, like a, a calling system to do that. And so sometimes like the first ring or two doesn't even hit our phones, right? It's kind of like while the call's still tied up in the calling system. And so then my phone, if I'm on call, I may only get two rings. And if I'm dead asleep, it may take me longer than that to, you know, wake up, realize my phone's going and press the, you know, pickup button. And by then it might've rolled over to Tom, you know? And so we just say that, but otherwise, no, we pick up the phone. And, you know, generally when I'm doing it, I will say, you know, I will get the information. I'll get up, I'll get the information from the person. And I'll say, all right, it's going to take me a few minutes to get logged into the system. And I'll give you a call back and, you know, in just a few minutes as, as I'm logged in and start taking a look and seeing if I can identify what's wrong, you know? And so, one, it doesn't, it doesn't leave them on the line. And two, it allows me, you know, to, to get up, get downstairs, get in front of my computer, get logged in, you know, and, and get remoted into Mitchell County and start reviewing what, you know, okay, what's going on? Check, check the managed services, see if there's any alerts that are telling us what's going on. See if there's other indicators, you know, and, and then start working from there.
So it does not go to voicemail and leave a message. It's, the caller needs to know, let it ring until somebody picks it up?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then in regards to recommendations, so you went through the cybersecurity training that you've got, maybe think. There's, and we, we currently don't have MFA on multi-factor in our system. We also, our emails are, right now are not dot gov. And there's certain things that we probably need to upgrade. So looking in the future, do this fully managed services give us recommendations all the time as far as, you probably better be doing this.
Yeah. No, absolutely. We would definitely give recommendations. And, and we've given those recommendations in the past, you know, to various IT staff that have been here. And whether or not they choose, you know, one of the things when we're co-managed, we don't want to step on the toes. You know, sometimes IT people find it aggressive or something if we were to reach around them. If we find something that's dire, you know, we're going to do something like that. You know, I'm going to call and say, hey, you know, Rachel, something's going on that I don't like or something. But we're not gonna, we're going to present, you know, an IT person with those things. And so in this case, yes, we would definitely be pounding that out. Like two factor authentication has been something we've, we implemented it like five years ago. And, and we've been pushing it on our customers ever since as, and, and, and I don't know, you know, I haven't had a deep involvement with you guys outside of, like I said, I'm not a salesperson. I talk with the IT people all the time or whoever the IT liaison is or the auditors. Because I'm so involved with cybersecurity, I have a deep relationship with a lot of the auditors. Dealing with all the, all the Secretary of State cybersecurity admin rules and stuff. So I tell them all the time. And, oh, and, and when it comes to cybersecurity insurance, that's another time where I get heavily involved and like, okay, are we meeting these goals? You know, these requirements and what do we need to do if we aren't, so on and so forth? And that's been, that's actually been a real nice driver for the two factor authentication. Because as I stated, it's one of the biggest bang for your buck protections you can do. And so that's definitely something that I've talked to prior staff about. And I would continue to say, yes, we would definitely make that recommendation. The, the, as far as the email goes and getting onto a dot gov domain, we can definitely, we've done a lot of those migrations. We, we can migrate to a GCC mail tenant, but we can also talk about the reason, you know, you don't necessarily have to do that or not. Now the email thing, that actually, anything that you're supposed to be doing, communications that are election related, you are supposed to be on a dot gov. So are you guys not? Are you saying you're not? I don't have your.
No.
Memorized right in front of me. But yeah, that's, that's definitely something from like the auditor's perspective that we would want to have a dot gov domain. And that's fairly simple to do actually. As opposed to, you know, I know, I know that you had, or I believe you had, yeah, back, back when I think it was Paul. The ICIT group came through and, and ran recommendations, did a little eval and eval and what have you. And one of the things they always say is to migrate to a GCC tenant. And that's a, I, I forget what it stands for, government, something tenant in, in Microsoft 365. And they, they tell you that you have to, but the truth of the matter is you don't have to. We recommend it as well. It's a good thing, but you don't, you don't have to do it. I don't want to lie to you and say you have to do it. Because we've, we've gone down the road with everybody at the state, FBI, everybody. Nobody says, there's no regulation anywhere that says that you have to be on a government tenant. And so the reason that people don't is it's a very expensive move. It's not easy. It's intrusive on your county and it's expensive. So, you know, we can have a lot of those conversations as well. And those things aren't dependent on going to a gold. We, we can have those conversations, you know, however this kind of turns out. There's, there's definitely a lot of recommendations and, and things. And if you want to have a conversation while there's no IT person or whatever, you know, that's, you know, we can definitely do that. So that you understand where we, where we stand on those things. I'd be glad to have some of those conversations as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now to the pricing.
Great.
So currently, y'all are spending $30,726 for the silver co-managed IT services. That does not include whatever PPL, correct Mike? Is that?
Correct. That does not. I'd have to go back and look. I didn't look that up. Apologize. But generally, we don't have many, I mean, it's generally going to be in the neighborhood of like $10,000 PPL a year. That's kind of a guideline on that.
What is that? What do you mean PPL?
Prepaid labor.
That prepaid labor. Sorry, apologize that we talked about earlier that you kind of purchase. We, we sell it in like $5,000 increments and then you can just like chew away at that throughout the year. As you have, you know, calls that come in and which we pull hourly.
And that is on top of our silver co-managed fee?
Correct, correct. And so for you guys though, having a full IT person, a lot of times that doesn't move very fast. You don't, you don't end up chewing through that very fast because you have a full or had a full IT person. So, you know, that's, that's one of the things there. But without somebody, you would chew through it quite a bit quicker. And so as we look at this, really the difference, like for the, so first off, if you'd, if we had had this conversation in June, let's say, going into a July contract, which is, you know, how are all our contracts would have been, the amount would have been 59 for the, for the gold or the, the fully managed. And so we can see that here. And so what that translates down to, you know, is roughly, roughly 2,300 a month. And so if you, if we want to prorate it for this, it would be about roughly $19,000 as we see in that middle line there, the nineteen or the eighteen nine seven seven. And, and that's really the difference as far as the cost goes. So, you know, what I, what I tell people as you look at is, is the value is obviously there because you can't hire an IT person for that cost, right? At least, at least not, well, not in this day and age, you really can't hire somebody for, for less than that. And so, and, and you're not paying, you're not paying us, you know, to have IPers and, and insurance and all of those things through you either. So less headcount for you. So really, the decision becomes for you guys, is it super important that you have somebody sitting there at a desk, you know, waiting for a call or, and then even then, how do you back them up and stuff? And that's why, you know, we've, you, you obviously understand the value in managed services as a whole. It's just, do we, do we up the package or do we not? So I'm not going to.
We will throw in, with that, that annual cost, the 59,000, we will throw in a year of the cybersecurity training for you guys.
Is that, that's course that you were talking about?
That's correct. Yes.
What does that usually cost approximately?
Um, I would say it's in the neighborhood, it, it's, it's a licensed product. So it's based on the number of, of people, you know, I'd, I'd say, I use the term butts and seats. That, and so it would, it's roughly $2,000 a year for the licensing. And then we, we have a, an optional thing in the past that you can either choose to manage that whole system yourself or we'll manage it for you. That's because that 2,000 is just kind of the licensing. We'll manage it for you for roughly a thousand dollars. It depends on the number of seats as well. But we'll manage it for you for a thousand dollars a year. And so what she's saying is you'd get that included.
With the gold, yep.
For the first year?
First year.
Annual basis?
Correct.
Which one? Annual basis or first year?
First year.
Okay. So, and I understand that that would be $2,000 to license it and a thousand dollars for you guys to facilitate those training snapshots through, for the employees throughout the year. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Are we able to have a prepaid labor fee if we would decide to hire our own IT person?
Yeah, that's, that's where you, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and access a prepaid labor for let's say vacation backup. Similar to what we, I believe we have had in the past.
Yes, that's, that's what I was going to say. That, that's absolutely what you're doing now. Like you have the prepaid labor and, and the silver managed services. And, you know, there, there's a lot of benefits to it. We could talk for another half hour, 45 minutes on that. But you know what I'll boil it down to is by us being in there with silver managed services, we really have the, the knowledge and the, the connectivity to see, to be able to help in these instances, right? Where you've had to react to the loss of an IT person. If we didn't have that, could we still help you? Yeah, we could, but there would have been, one, there'd been a lot more cost to it. And two, we wouldn't have had the knowledge. It would have taken longer. It would have been a bigger struggle. But as we can see here, like we, I mean, we've helped with a lot of stuff over the, the minute that we learned about this. We fixed some things with the new phone system. Some problems that were caused with the HVAC system. We've racked the switch. We've, we've done fix the camera network at the public health, you know, so on and so forth. If we didn't have the managed services, we wouldn't be able to do that. And also with the managed services, you know, we are a backup system. So yes, the problem is that you're, you're still paying, you don't, you don't know, you don't have that budgetary, like you don't know what you're, it's going to cost you to, to fix something or when you're going to have something that we, you would have to pay us for. Where with the managed services gold, you don't have to worry about that. You know what your number is. It's kind of hard budgeted. And if you have new projects or things, you can budget for those, right? And so there, that's why I say there'd be separate labor on those instances that, you know, you're doing a project and there's a new budget. But right now, the gold provides you that, that flat level, that peace of mind that your, your general IT support is going to be, this is how much it's going to cost. And it's not going to cost more than that.
And you don't have to worry about us going on vacation. You have a whole team, not just relying on one person. So it creates that continuity of service. You don't have to worry about sick days or vacation days or anything like that.
So I'm sure that you folks are already tracking, what is your average follow-up time to a, to a call? In other words, if, if you have to go on site to correct something, what is your?
If we have to go on site, I don't, we don't have numbers necessarily for that because rarely do we have to do that unplanned. We, we really don't have to do that very much unplanned. We go on site when, under planned, very planned circumstances. Now, that's not to say we don't. We had a county that had a, a lightning strike one day. And it was kind of like afternoon time and we did some troubleshooting remotely, trying to get, see if we could get around things or figure out what was wrong. And once we figured out that there was actually two switches that were completely fried by the, the lightning strike, we loaded up some spare switches that we had here and hopped in a car and went there. And technician was there, it was actually Tom. He was there on site until pretty late that night and then he drove home. And so we do that kind of thing, but I wouldn't say, we don't have, it doesn't happen enough that we have necessarily tracked that. Otherwise, we, we have an SLA for emergency situations, half hour response time. Doesn't mean that, you know, any IT company is going to talk about their SLAs in response time because it's impossible to say how long it's going to take to fix something. Because you just don't know. But our response time emergency is half an hour. But generally, for most stuff, it's like two hours. And that's the way it's been, but we generally beat that. So we come in under that more in the neighborhood of half hour to an hour on, on general phone calls. But it, so.
Okay.
We had, sorry for all these questions, but this is kind of a big.
No, this is great. Please ask away.
I've got so many questions. Our last, I hate to pick on people, but I won't mention names, but our last two IT directors were maybe, I'll just leave it at that. So we have a lot of cabling that is possibly shoddy and some, some stuff that needs to be cleaned up in regards to the server room and the comm center. And just to make things tidy it up and, and make things work better. So that if there is a problem, people can trace things, people know how to fix things easier. So, and I'm sure that's not part of this goal plan, but at, at any rate, if, if we chose to use you as our managed, fully managed IT, would you come to Mitchell County and spend an afternoon cleaning things up? Spend the day cleaning things? I mean, is that something that you could do? Troubleshoot, look over?
Yeah, we can use, we can use your day. Yeah, we can use, we can use your day trips, your your, you know, once a month onsite visit, however you want. If you wanted to plan a special project, we'd probably have a price on that or whatever, but otherwise, if you want to use your day. Your once a month visit, we can do that, so and we've done a lot of that, in fact, I could send you some pictures, I've had some really long nights. Tearing down networks and and what have you, but if it's going to be something where we can work on it during the day, normal hours. Then we could use the site if you want to do it, so it's not intrusive on people and we're going to be working overnight and stuff. Then there's going to have to be like a charge to that. That would be a project that we'd set up.
So it would be one, once a month visit would be, maybe you'd show up, you'd look over an area, say, yeah, we could tidy this up. And then the next once a month visit would be maybe the day that you could do some of that work, I mean, it's something like that rather.
Correct, yeah, I mean, generally, we're, when we say once a month or whatever, that's like eight hours a month, right? And so it would be a little bit up to the technician that's visiting, how they do it, it's. But the way there would either be is we'd show up eight to eight thirty in the morning and be there all day and. You know, get eight hours in that way, or sometimes on the further counties, you guys are kind of right on a border of being not. Not terribly far away, but far enough. But some of the further counties, when we do that, we we go down and we spend the day. The morning travel and get there about noon, spend like, you know, like four hours there on one day and then stay at a hotel. And come back the next morning and spend the next four hours or whatever, but generally, there's a lot of time in that, we can, we can look in. Identify and and yeah, it would be. Whether we could start work the one day or not, it it really depends on how it works out, we'd have to see the situation and. And and then probably what we want to do is schedule time with the people that are going to be affected by it and say, all right, look, we're going to do this. You know, over the eleven o'clock hour or something, right, we're going to pull all these cables and that's going to take you guys down or something. Or we may look at it too and say, this is way too big of a project to do, like. We're going to need to make a project out of this. Without seeing it, it's really hard to know for sure.
Okay, thank you, that answers that, thank you.
So that would be more like there's been much discussion about bringing the servers into the same room. To streamline and update and get everything. To up to stuff where it needs to be, that would be one of your special projects that you're referring to.
Yes, yes, but we definitely have done a lot of that. I I I'll, let me make a note, I'll send you some pictures on it, I'll probably have to track them down, but. We've done some pretty crazy cleanups. And consolidations, we just did a server move, a server remove. Actually, like less than a year ago, it's been a little while since we did a full like cable cleanup. But we did a server room move this last spring, where we took a room that had switch rack and a full server rack in it. And moved all that down from back behind the auditor's office down to a room in the basement and. Yeah, that all went pretty well, except that. A lesson learned there. Was that. The, there was a UPS that wasn't working or that was working perfectly fine, and. Once we unplugged it and moved it, it wouldn't like power back up, so that was a bit of a. Pain and a scare scare moment, and sometimes you run into that with electronics, but and it's really hard to tell. That something like that's going to happen, but so that was unfortunate and caused a delay in it, but. Get around it and now everything's moved and everybody's happy that. The auditor's office is no longer noisy with server fans and stuff, so. Let me see here. Need for IBM, back with.
So while you're looking there, you referenced the PPL and the five thousand dollars that we prepay every once in a while. One of the things that was. Kind of a challenge to go through was the invoicing once we hit our our level, so to speak. Here this spring, and those charges went back two years on on the tally sheet. You know, each of those calls, trouble calls, I'll call them at this point, some of them went back to two thousand twenty two. So are you closing out those tickets when those are done? And you know, some of them still look like they were even open, maybe that's something that you folks were working on at the same time. But it seemed like, you know, here we are into the year twenty four twenty five's budget. And we're we're paying on two thousand twenty two's IT issues, and I understand if we've just paid. Five thousand dollars and it lasts us about a year, but that didn't necessarily seem to be the case. So is there something you're working on with that system? As far as making sure that we're as close to our quote current year as we can be?
Yeah, so some, I I don't know exactly. Without looking at it, what would have happened, and even then it might have been hard to tell exactly, but there are times that. Picks or ticks texts will change a ticket and they'll they'll either inadvertently change a field or change incorrectly. And. I apologize, I just got an alarm, I do have a doctor's appointment, we've kind of gone a little longer than I thought we had, but.
With the gold, you don't have to worry about the PPL anymore, that prepaid labor unless you choose to have an extra built in. For special projects that that way you get that discount. So with the gold, you don't have to worry about that everyday usage of prepaid labor.
Okay. Well, we have gone quite a while, and I don't think we have any more questions from anybody here. If we do, we certainly can send them off to you, so that note is. We will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at ten seventeen, and thank you both very much for your for your time. And and our board will discuss this in the coming week or weeks.
You'll send us up, correct?
Yes, we will send you all the information.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
You too.
Yep, thanks, bye Rachel.
Bye.